Good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 on Monday evening, February 17th. Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is a regular session of council. First, we begin by establishing a quorum. It appears this evening that we have all members of council present. I am sitting as President Protam. President Sands is not able to be here this evening with us, so I will be voting as well in this position. We are now going to move on to disposition of minutes. We have a disposition of minutes from a regular session held February 3rd, 2014. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
I move to accept the regular session minutes held February 3rd.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The minutes are accepted. Thank you. Are there any communications from council members?
I have one. Thank you. I would like to move to reappoint John Golsey to the Board of Zoning Appeals. His term has expired, and he has indicated that he would like to serve another term, which I sincerely appreciate. It's one of the harder commissions, I think, that we have. They do a lot of research and spend a lot of time reviewing the cases that come before them. So I move that we accept his reappointment.
The motion, is there also a second for his appointment?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the reappointment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we have a reappointment, and thank you again for the service work, Mr. Golsey. Any other communications? Moving on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Do we start or begin with the man to my right here, our Law Director, Mr. Lang?
Go ahead and start with me this time. Mix it up a little bit. I'd like a brief report, Mr. President. First things first, I do need to make mention of the fact that, and I don't think you can really tell the difference on TV, but there's been a massive renovation of our council chambers here, and it is just fantastic. It's much more spacious back here, and more importantly, we have an accessibility ramp which has been added, so that's certainly a giant step in the right direction. So I just wanted to thank Scott Thompson at the Government Channel and all of the people who worked so hard to make this happen so quickly. I do have one brief item of business, that being that the city did receive a ruling back this week in one of the small handful of lawsuits that was pending against the city. That was the case of Larry's Incorporated versus City of Athens, and this case was basically involving, it was an infrastructure case involving some damage which was done to property several years ago as a result of some flooding along Columbus Road and a, and some faulty storm lines. Now, the city's legal position in this case from the start had been that while it was very unfortunate, the property damage which was incurred by the owners here, it was not the city's responsibility. There had been no showing of negligence or anything that the city had done improperly. And even, and so the court essentially agreed with that position, ruled in the city's favor, finding that there, they did not make a finding as to whether there had been any negligence, but did state that even had there been some showing of a design defect or anything, or a construction defect, that the city had governmental immunity in that case, which had been our position. So we were certainly pleased that the court found in favor of the city on that case. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Law Director Lang. Mayor Wile, any communications?
Just two items. Let's see. One being that the Planning Commission is going to be meeting on Wednesday, the 19th, at noon. Usually we meet on Thursday, so normally the 20th would be the normal meeting date. It will be Wednesday, the 19th, at 12:00. The main thrust of our meeting, of course, will be looking at Title 23 zoning code work session. The other one is that, thank you for appointing John Golsey. He intends to be the chair for the BZA, which is, it's good because they've been doing like around Robin for many months now. Greg Lavelle, who is up for reappointment, declined to be reappointed, so there's an opening there for an alternate. I have yet to talk to the two alternates that are there and see if they want to step into the regular member, an alternate for the BZA. And I believe that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Wile. Auditor Hekt, any reports?
Hi. Well, no report. Actually, just a reminder, since I don't see it on the agenda, that I need the auditor's financial reports for January approved.
Okay, so we'll do that at the end with a friendly reminder from the clerk. Thank you. I believe that covers all of our elected officials. Am I seeing anyone hiding? Okay. Moving on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 0314, an ordinance amending ordinance 14713, non-union personnel fringe benefits package. To clarify, that paid absence days must be taken in eight-hour increments, introduced by Councilmember Nysli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 314.
Second.
And this particular ordinance was originally passed in December 2013, and it described the non-union personnel's fringe benefits package. There was one section in that ordinance that needed to be clarified, and that ordinance reads, "Any employee in an active work status and who does not utilize any of his or her sick leave for any 90-day consecutive calendar day period shall be entitled to one paid absence day." And the clarification of this, of the amendment tonight, is that the auditor's office has said, "For purposes of most efficiently keeping track of these paid days off, that they be taken in eight-hour increments." So that's the particular amendment for this ordinance.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to accept ordinance 0314. All those in favor of accepting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Moving on to ordinance 0414, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street from Union to State on Saturday, April 19th, 2014, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the International Street Fair. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is up for third reading, so we can vote this evening. I just want to, you need a second? No, I guess we don't.
Do you want to move it? Or do you want to amend?
Yeah, I want to. No, we don't need to amend.
Okay. I'm, I second.
So this is pretty standard ordinance that we pass whenever we need to close a street for a festival, and this would be the International Street Fair. So as was already mentioned, we begin set up at 7:00 a.m. and then hope that everything can be cleaned up and the street ready for operation at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept ordinance 0414. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 0514, an ordinance amending ordinance 9313, authorizing acquisition of the Daller Family property adjacent to the Far Hills subdivision to remain as undeveloped park land. And this is introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 93-13.
Second.
Thank you. This, this particular ordinance is basically an ordinance that is making it more specific in terms of the actual acreage involved in the Daller property and to, I guess, more accurately identify where this property is. It sits off of Cardiff Lane, but it's also probably more appropriately off of Far Hills subdivision.
Thank you. Any comments, thoughts? I meant to ask that earlier. So we have a motion and a second to accept ordinance 0514. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 0514 is adopted. Moving on to ordinance 0614, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to purchase a street sweeper and declaring certain equipment no longer needed for municipal purpose. Again, this is introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance, ordinance 06-14.
Second.
Thank you. Again, this is an ordinance to replace an aging street sweeper, and I believe, Mayor, that the aging sweet, street sweeper will be retained and used for things such as vacuum up leaves and...
That's the last dialogue we've had so far. We'll change it out. The frame and chassis, I think, is still good. It's the rest of the mechanics I think that matter. But I haven't heard the latest evaluation, but I have just, still don't know.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we do have a motion and a second, correct? To accept this ordinance, all those in favor of accepting ordinance 0614, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 0614 is adopted. Okay, now we're moving on to ordinances for first reading, and we'll have brief descriptions of these ordinance, ordinances from the councilman representing. First ordinance, 0714, an ordinance granting renewal of a revocable license to Douglas and Dolores, I believe, Addy, which is 91 May Avenue, for use of the city right-of-way for an existing fence. And this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Mr. President Protam. Probably should say 91 South May. If we could, I think that's just the type of...
Sure.
This is a renewal of, to allow the existing six-foot encroachment by a fence that is already existing for further 10 years. Barely straightforward. Presented last week. Any questions?
Any questions from council members? Ordinance 0814, an ordinance granting a revocable license to Paul F. Carey of 147 Columbus Road for use of the city right-of-way for an existing sign. Again, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Oh, thank you. This is a tiny bit different in our revocable license extravaganza here. When the city did the work on Columbus Road this summer, they were, had new surveying and such, and it was discovered that an existing sign at 147 Columbus Road was actually in the right-of-way, so they would like to make sure that the sign has a revocable license to go with it. So it's granting a new revocable license that can be renewed every 10 years. Questions?
Mayor Wile. Sorry. Member Reisner.
Okay, so these, these people have never had a license before.
No, they never knew that they were in the city right-of-way. So the survey, you know, further designated the right-of-way. Which is true for, you know, right-of-ways are not necessarily known and not very well all over the city.
Thank you. Mayor Wile.
Again, as, as said, this was a survey that delineated where our right-of-way are. We have various streets that have a regular right-of-ways. Columbus Road is one, Stimson's another. Many are left over from where the traffic patterns changed. At one point, Columbus Road is 33, so therefore is wider in some places, narrow in others. Council, of course, has power over the right-of-ways, city right-of-ways, which is why you're involved in this. This gentleman's trying to make it all legal, having, after having found out. This is no different than, in one sense, the use of the right-of-way for International Street Fair or signage. He's a revocable 10 years, so we expect to see this in another 10 years again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wile. Any other comments? Okay, moving on. Ordinance 0914, an ordinance authorizing an extension of the current contract with the Athens Hakim County Recycling Centers, Inc., and ancillary services as authorized by ordinance 7712, introduced by all council members. Who is speaking on this? This is number Patterson.
I can speak on this. Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a one-year extension of a contract that goes back a long ways. The original contract with Hack, Athens Hakim Recycling Centers started in July 1 of 2007. As I understand it, it actually started long before that, or well before that. But this is contract number 07-026S, and it will be terminating, or the current contract will end July 1 of 2014. So therefore, this is an extension from July 1, 2014, to June 30, 2015.
Any questions or comments from council members?
I'll let the mayor go first.
This is a one-year extension. We did one last year. The main reason why we're doing this is there's been no change in the dollar amount. The solid waste district and the recycling nonprofit are in a state of transition flux right now, so with the idea of letting them settle their differences and pieces, we're gonna, we're just gonna extend this for another year. We do expect some transitions over time as they do separate out. This has been a long time, they've been blended together, both the district and the nonprofit. I believe Ohio University has extended theirs for a year as well. So it, as I say, it's part, it's part of the system, trying to be one of the stable partners in a time of transition. I don't know if I need to add anything else.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pappy?
So my question is, on this one-year extension, are there, is this exactly the way it looked to last year? So there's been no...
But the date's being changed.
No changes. I appreciate that we're trying to work with the system as it's, as it's going through flux. I just wanted to make sure that there were no changes. This is the first I'm seeing this tonight.
From what I've seen, there have been any changes. Nobody really wanted to modify anything at this point, just because they want continuity. We want continuity because realize we're gonna have move out, we're gonna have various events.
Correct.
The nonprofit has been very flexible for our needs, being a city that we are. What happens in future, we'll find out.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Ordinance 1014, an ordinance amending the 2014 appropriation ordinance and authorizing an inter-fund transfer. This is introduced by Councilmember Nysli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend ordinance 1014.
Second.
The purpose for the suspension is that the auditor's office needs to move forward with balancing our revenue accounts in a timely fashion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for ordinance 1014. And this is on suspension only. All those in favor of suspension, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, the ordinance has been, the rules for voting have been suspended here.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 1014.
Second.
This particular ordinance amends what basically began as our budget for the fiscal year. There are three, three major sections to it, some of which were discussed in committee meeting last week. The first section has to do with appropriating monies or increasing the appropriation. The second section decreases certain amounts, and then the third section will transfer some monies. I'll go through each of these items fairly briefly because we've been through them before. In section one, so this is where we're increasing monies, and the first part of it is $2,282.47 for the House Arrest Fund. What this basically is doing is assigning a new account, account for the electronic monitoring program through the courts, and later on, we'll be closing out and transferring some of the monies over from another account. $25,000 to the Athens Enhancement Fund 250, and this is for the city's involvement in an electric aggregation program, which was in cooperation with the county. Both of these initiatives were approved at last fall's general election. As part of the next steps in the process, the city and the county are going to be working towards implementation, and the $25,000 will be part of the funds the city uses as they work with the county to mutually agree on next steps, moving forward, criteria, selection of, possible selection of consultants or companies to work with. The next appropriation of money is $616,514.22, and this is to the Small Cities ODOT Fund 589. Many of you may remember that there were some major improvements done to the, what's called the Oxbow Bridge, and that these were done last spring. And what we now have are the last amounts of, of the expenses. The total project was $3.8 million. At the end of last fiscal year, we had spent $2.474 million of that, and since we had not expended all of the funds, so we, that we had accurate accounting, at the end of last year, the city reduced the appropriation for the portion of the funding that was unspent. So now what we're doing is appropriating the monies, and they have been expended, they will be expended. What's been happening, even though the project is fairly well finished, city staff have been reviewing final quantities and receiving change order documentation. So this is some of the last of the project details. So those are the new appropriations, or in effect, increasing amounts in our budget. This second section has to do with some amounts that we're going to be decreasing the budget in effect. And what these recommendations are based on, from the auditor and review by city administrative staff and the finance committee, so that we're more accurately reflecting our revenue for the year. We're not putting too much, we, we don't have too much money into accounts for revenue we're not going to receive. The first of those, where we'll be decreasing the amounts, is the Tourism Fund 212. We'll be decreasing it by $5,000. The Clerk's Computer Fund by $8,000. The House Arrest Fund by $3,000, and this is the one we mentioned earlier. What we're doing is closing out this one account, and the new account was previously described. The Recreation Fund, we're reducing by $200,000. This corrects for a double entry of salary amounts in the budget. Last year in rec, we had $357,371 in the salary line, and this year's budget is $658,000. We need to get that back into the, you know, the corrected amount, so that there's money in other accounts for the recreation center to be able to spend. The Capital Improvements Fund, the recommendation is to reduce the amount, excuse me, Capital Improvements Fund, reduce that by $100,000. And what this adjustment is, is so that the accounts more accurately reflect the anticipated income tax revenue that's, and this, this is, this portion of the Capital Improvements Fund is part of our income tax revenues. And I won't go into all the details of how that's split out, but if anybody's interested, we can provide that information after the council meeting. The last appropriation where we're decreasing then will be the Medical Internal Service Fund, and council members might remember that last year, we were in the midst of making some adjustments to that number to make sure we were trying to accurately reflect having enough money in that, in that Medical Internal Service Fund to be able to pay for claims. We made an overestimate, and I'd far rather have it an overestimate and be able to bring it back down again than the other way. So we're decreasing that by $370,000. So those are the decreases. Section three then is an inter-fund transfer that's mentioned in the text of the ordinance, and what that does is closes the House Arrest Fund and transfers the balance to the DUI Court Grant Fund. So we're in essence, closing out one account so that the grant expenses can be made from another.
Thank you. The details. Any questions? Comments from council members? Okay, we have a motion and a second after we suspended the rules. So now we have a motion and a second to accept the ordinance 1014. All those in favor of accepting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 1114, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency for a community development block grant for calendar year 2015, federal fiscal year 2014, introduced by Councilmember Nysli.
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular ordinance will authorize the mayor, as it says, to submit for our annual Ohio Development Services Agency Community Development Block Grant. You might sometimes hear that referred to as the CDBG program, so that's just an acronym for that Community Development Block Program. And what it affords our city of Athens to do is perform a number, number of projects that will bring about improvements to the city, particularly low and moderate income areas. And we will be having, as a part of this authorization and then applying for the grant, two public hearings, and those will be held in the coming weeks, and then to get citizen feedback, also possibly ideas for projects. So that public hearing component is a very important part of our process for this. We have several projects' ideas that have been mentioned so far. One of them is the Franklin Street Storm Project. I believe some improvements to the storm sewers for that particular area. And then the other possibility that's been mentioned so far is possible use of the funds to do the, it's almost a form of rubberized coating on public playgrounds, so that children are safe when they go into play on that. So those, those are some of the ideas now that are being considered, and I'm sure we'll hear more discussion when we get to the public hearings.
Ordinance 1214, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $145,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes issued for the purpose of paying part of the costs of acquiring and installing energy conservation improvements at the city's community center and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Nysli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules for ordinance 1214.
Second.
The reason being that we have a February 28 due date for the renewal.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, knowing that we have this due date upcoming, for ordinance 1214. This is a vote for suspension only. All those in favor of suspension signify, please, by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have suspended the rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 1214.
Second.
And this particular ordinance takes care of some of our borrowing that we have had for a major project out at our community center. I believe it was maybe several years ago, we did some energy improvements to the community center, and as part of the project costs, we borrowed $220,000. The renewal of that loan has come up, and as stated, is due February 28. What we do with these major projects where we've borrowed money is we try and pay a portion down each year. So you may recall earlier, towards the end of last year, we were paying down part of the costs for the, our fire truck, our new fire truck. This time, it's for this large project of the energy, energy efficiency additions to the community center. The auditor and city administration and finance committee are recommending paying that $220,000 loan down by $75,000. And so that will leave a balance of $145,000 that we will renew the loan, and the rate will be the same as it was last year. It will be 0.35% interest.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, council members?
I just, I want to extend that appreciation to the local bank, but gives us such great deals on this. 0.35 is just free money. I mean, it's great to be able to do...
It really is. Even our bond counsel, who prepares these ordinances and the paperwork for us, has said that for years, that we are really, really lucky that he doesn't see this anywhere else in the state, that he deals with...
Yeah, it's really, I mean, it helps the community so much, because if you have to spend a lot more on the money that you get to do projects, it just limits the amount of projects. So I want to say thank you.
To kind of echo that, but from a slightly different angle, you know, the city's credit rating is quite stellar as well, which, you know, a lot to our city auditor for keeping things on track with, with that as well. And the mayor?
Thank you, thank you. We do, and paying down as much as we can every time they're due, yes, the, the local bank does give us the best interest rate possible, and it is because of that, because of our record. because of that, because of our record.
Thank you, auditor. Thank you, Member Patterson. Thank you, Mayor Fall. Mayor Wile?
This started, I think, over $300,000, 335 or 40, I think it was.
$356,000.
Fifty-six, yeah. So we've been paying it down in increments, and this was all the energy efficiencies at the community center, whether it's fans, the lighting, the airflow, with the idea that this would make our overall cost of operations less. So it's, it's kind of a win for that side as well. And as I say, with good rates, we can do, we can bring it down pretty quickly.
It's a big building with long hours, and I will say that the original project was $356,000, but we only borrowed $300,000, and the community center fund did pay part of the cost upfront, rather than borrowing the entire amount. So it's always good when you can do that, too.
And I believe Director Capitelli has, has acknowledged the savings with electricity and the benefit of the new lighting. I think we've seen some of those reports in the data, which is significant.
We haven't seen anything recently. Might be nice to...
We could always quiz him and see what's going on.
Yeah, it would be nice to see something recent, to see how. I was thinking that last week at our committee meeting, and I didn't mention anything about it, but it would be nice to have an update of what we're saving from prior years.
Okay. I think we've been running some long hours and hot hour, you know.
With the cold.
It's been used as a conference station, and...
Absolutely.
I got a report from last week that because the school was out, there was quite a few people there. I forget the numbers, but it was, you know, pretty high. I mean, basically everybody went to go hang out, you know.
At the community center, yes.
Thank you. So we have suspended the rules, and now we're moving towards, we have a motion and a second to accept the ordinance 1214. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 1214. Moving along to announcements and other business. I do believe there has been some interest expressed in some committee meetings next week.
I mean, what one?
Which would be?
The planning development.
Planning development.
Might be an update on the sewer system.
With the county.
The county. Maybe.
Transportation will need, we're gonna discuss the South Richland Project.
I'm guessing there's likely a financing for...
Finance.
As always. It wouldn't be a complete week without, without.
Any other committees?
City and service safety at this point in time, no. But that can change.
Were there any other reappointments that we take, we took care of?
I don't trust me.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. So we, the auditor had requested that we...
Was it for January's?
To accept January's reports, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the auditor's report. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. So we accept the report. Thank you. Any other...
So you know, that's a state auditor's request from about five years ago. That's not something I just want to hear you do every month. But the state auditor's request, let that be in the minutes every month.
It's good documentation that you're provide, you're doing your job as the auditor, and so it gets, it gets it in the minutes.
Right. They want to know that those reports have been distributed around the city, which they have, and they do come to council.
And if I recall correctly, the state was just down here last week, or?
They, the weather kept them away. They will be back next Monday, kind of getting started with our audit. They haven't really started. I'd say we've started supplying them with information, but if the weather clears up, then we'll start seeing them.
Okay. Thank you. Any other announcements or business, other business? At this point in our meeting, we offer an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered on the agenda. Comments from citizens? We have three minutes to speak at the podium. Okay, seeing none, we are now adjourned from the meeting at approximately 7:34 p.m. Thank you.